Would you please stand for your pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, in the true republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
We have a special presentation tonight from Mrs. Sherwood, our district superintendent, her former bossy, so I'd like to welcome you.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening. I would like to introduce Steve. He is our business manager. Jodi Rodriguez retired in September. So Steve has been working with her a little bit of overlap, but he's now, he's now our budget guy, so. So please, as we go through this, please ask questions as we go through. It's easier to ask them through the different sections. You'll be voting on the administrative budget on April 21st, April 21st of the 21st year, so it's easy to remember this year. The BOSI's administrative budget is broken down into five basic components plus the post-retirement. In your booklet, I'm going to go right, slides will go right in the order, if you look at some on page two, it kind of gives you the overview of the five areas and then the post-retirement costs. So the overall increase to just the admin budget will be almost 3.23%, but I'm going to walk you through each of those five components. And then we'll also talk briefly about the capital budget. The Board of Education budget is probably the most simple of all the BOSI's budgets. It's just the quarterback costs. As you can see, last or for this current year, we moved over the district clerk, Carter First's salary. So there's a slight incremental change there and the benefits that go with that. But that line, the non-structural salary, also carries two stipends, the claims auditor and the deputy claims auditor. Those are all board appointments. So otherwise, not a lot of change here. And of course, we have a 10-member board that represents our 10 component districts. It's Janine Panathos. Any questions on that? District superintendent, probably the only thing that seems to jump out at people is that it looks like my board is very unhappy with me and is giving me a pay cut. What actually happened last year, you may recall, my board evaluates me in November and December so that they can estimate what my increase would be in order to put it into the budget appropriately in January. But then COVID hit, and so I asked them not to give me the raise that they budgeted. So the amount you see next year is actually the same amount that I'm getting this year. I asked them to freeze it for one more year and hope that the economy is going to improve for everyone. This year, however, the board gave some pushback. And so if you go to the teacher retirement line about halfway down, you'll see that while the teacher retirement line does go up every year, they're also putting some money into a 403B because they didn't think that I should not get anything. So that's. Otherwise, it's all just commensurate with the changes and some of those benefits change whether your pay increases or not. Any questions on that one? And that just represents the BOSI share of my salary. The state pays $43,499 to every guest in the state, so that's in addition to this. This is only BOSI's portion. Next part of the budget is central administration. Out of the picture, I will point out is the actual handing of the big dollar that the visual communications gets created from me by Remington after the successful vote, after three years. So we finally held the vote. The building is now ours, and we're thrilled to be there permanently. So central administration. One of the things you'll see in a couple of different budgets, but this one, I think, isn't, Steve, is this one that was budgeted and the actual are two different things, right? Or maybe. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so if you look at the general liability insurance, and you'll see this on a couple of different budgets. If you look at the actual 1920, you see that in 1920 budget year, we paid about $32,000 for insurance. But last year, what was budgeted was 21. Well, what we pay is actually closer to 32. And you're going to find that in a couple. I don't, I can't say reliable, it's much lower what we had anticipated. So what you see for general liability insurance is the actual, our typical 32, plus we now need to insure Remington, which is about $10,000. So that's what that increase is. Otherwise, I don't think there's any major increases in this one. Any questions on central admin? Business administration, of course, had a change in that assistant superintendent, Jody Rodriguez, retired. He brought in Steve as business manager, so we did have to move, this is kind of that weird part of BOSI's budget. We had to move a portion of assistant superintendent Jim Cola to oversee all of the business office functions. So there's now a piece of him in that budget, and that's one of the things that sets BOSI's apart from school budgets is that we have to actually apportion people to what they serve, and he now is serving part of the business office. So, and I think this one, health insurance, this line is another good example where in 1920, we actually paid $102,000, but we only budgeted, let's say 85 or 95, 85, but it really is closer to $100,000. So we're putting it back where it should be. And then this is that part of the BOSI's budget where we actually have to allocate the transfer charges of the operating of the administrative offices. So what portion of the telephone bill, the technology bill, what portion is out of our office? The big change here, of course, is that very top line, the transfer for revenues. For those of you who've been on the board, you may recall, two years ago, the government changed the law so that we could have a TRS reserve for BOSI's. Of course, our budget was already done by the time they passed that law. So what we did is we had federal money that had been sitting, it had been left over from a grant, and it needed to be expended in a very particular way, so we allocated it into the TRS reserve. The only way for us to do it was to bring it into revenue and spend it out as a transfer charge. So the last year and this year, we used that to build the TRS reserve. And next year, we're not budgeting anything to go into the TRS reserve because that leftover money has been expended. So that's the big change on this one. Any questions? So the sixth part of the admin budget for BOSI's is actually the post-retirement health care costs. And this is a big cost driver. This was something I discussed with the superintendent my very first year here in 1718. And at that time, while we were building this budget, it was determined we need to bring more of the post-retirement costs into this budget so that you get BOSI's aid on it as opposed to the programs. So we have been slowly putting a little more into this every year. This year, the admin budget in totality, 63.16% of it are just post-retirement costs. The good news is, though, that that 63.16% of this budget actually represents 71% of all of our post-retirement health costs. So we are actually getting close to where we wanted to be, which is probably between 85 and 90. There's actually a sweet spot for schools that you get better aid with some of it left in part of the budget and some of it in this budget. So we're watching that to make sure we stay so that you get maximum aid. So that's a big cost driver, and it also drives our percentage up, but this, like I said, generates aid. So in the long run, it saves everybody money by putting it here instead of the program costs. Any questions on this? So then just a reminder of our ARWADA's, that's the resident weighted average daily for West Canada Valley. Last year, you were right around 8%. So if you think of ARWADA as the BOSI's pie, you were around 8% of the BOSI's pie last year. This year, you're going to be about 7.78%. So that's a bit of a decrease. I suspect some of that, though, may be because you had a very large portion go to homeschooling. So it will still be your ARWADA for next year, but it's probably going to jump back up the following year when some of the homeschooling kids probably return when there are no COVID restrictions. That's the estimate, so, but it'll save some money in next year's budget. So that's a good year to have some savings. And then just looking, the last page of your booklet is the ARWADA, the administrative plus the capital. You don't vote on the capital because it's fluid. You only vote on the administrative. But these are the two budgets that we can keep the most aligned. So we try to look at them every year with you, and you can see because we are no longer paying rent for the Remington building next year, so our capital bill is actually going down quite a bit. And so with the increase to the admin budget, the overall increase is of 1.35. However, there's a good example of why this is fluid. Just the other, what, two weeks ago, maybe Frankfurt Schuyler stepped up to host regional summer school. So there was no rent built into the capital budget for regional summer school because we thought we were going to have to host it at one of our facilities. So that rent will now go in, and that's why you don't vote on capital budget because it changes based on the needs of the districts. And that is it for the budget. Any questions? So just a reminder again, so our annual meeting, which of course is no dinner to share because of COVID, is April 1st. That's not a joke. It's actually April 1st is our annual meeting. We're really focusing, it will be Zoom. I'm asking every board to have a member there to vote either on Zoom or in person. My board will actually be at Remington. Just because we need to open the meeting, we need to have form to open the meeting. We have to vote on last year's minutes for last year's meeting, and then we have to have form to close the meeting. So I do, I'm asking every board to have somebody either on Zoom or at the Remington to represent your vote. The student performance, I've collected artwork, thank you, Mr. Shepherd, from the different districts, and I'm just putting together an art show kind of of all the different regional work that just has the child's name, the district, and the grade level. And that's going to play for about 10 minutes before the meeting and about 10 minutes after. So if a student actually wants to go on and see their work livestreamed on the internet, they can. And then the whole focus is going to be about the community and the really incredible work that's gone on this past year. March 13th, Friday, the 13th, was when the superintents coincidentally were meeting with public health, and the 12 of us the first heard were case of COVID. So the 13th was when we actually closed school, and then, of course, Governor Formo closed all schools and so did the 18th. So that's a little hard to believe. That's a year ago. On the other hand, it seems like five years ago that nothing's been normal for so long. So we're really focusing on the community. Our community partner award is going to the public health department. Our community partner award is going to the public health department because how many meetings has she come to? Pretty short notice, she'll come into a Zoom meeting and answer questions and give us the answers when she can't get answers from the state. And she'll give us her best guess, and we'll go from there. She's worked really closely with our safety office, Adam Hutchinson, to develop, like for the sports, the most recent thing was the athletics. Adam put together a template, got it out to the athletic directors, and worked with Christina Kane at public health to make sure the template met her needs. And the athletic directors could start filling that out. So when a board voted to allow sports, everything was ready to go into public health so it could get approved. So I mean, that's the kind of work that's been going on for almost a year. And it's just been exhausting for superintendents, for administrators, for staff, for parents. It's just been exhausting. So we're really looking to celebrate the whole region. My presentation is really just going to be about the challenges that we faced and what school looks like now, because it looks so different. Everybody's job looks so different. So very different focus for our annual meeting. And then again, the budget vote and the board member election is April 21st. Three districts that are up are Frankford Skyler, Little Falls, and Richfield Springs. So those are the three that are up for regular three-year shirts. So you'll have those. And I'm pretty sure all three boards are navigating. So I think we're good on all three. So that's it for BOSI, unless there's any other question.
Any other questions or anything for Mr. Sherwood on your presentation?
I just want to take a second and thank Mr. Sherwood, Mr. Coop, and all of BOSI's. As you mentioned, the last year has been crazy. And having someone at the regional level, state level, you know, giving us as much heads up on different things that are going on, even if it's like last second. Because you're getting it and we're getting it last second, you know, trying to get that communication out to everybody that's here and keeping everybody in the community. You've been a part of that at BOSI, so I appreciate everything you guys have done. Thank you for coming here tonight.
And it's been a partnership. I mean, all the superintendents have just done tremendous work. And I particularly appreciate, especially when I listen to my colleagues around the state, that these 10 superintendents have really tried, very different districts with very different communities, but they've tried to keep the basic rules the same so that parents don't have to try to figure out, well, when we're there, what's the rule? And when we're there, what's the rule? They've really tried to stay pretty lax, which I think has been a tremendous help across the region. So it's really been quite a... I don't want to do it again, but it certainly has been a good learning experience.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Not even going to steal your...
Thank you.
All right, administration reports. We'll start with Mr. Ray.
Yeah, here's a few tea birthday. All our buses passing here. We had one more inspection before the end of the state year, which I hope we had 100% again. Of course, that's not true. Over the break, we had, I'm just doing downtime. Had to act reminder, paying inside the bus garage. So we all put a sort of base. We handed over the track mats are at this point. Also, I want to give a heads up about the three food deliveries we did. We had 16 families, which consists of 54 families each day in one hour. A lot of our homework, and it's a must, will correct through the AS.
Any questions for Mr. Ray? Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Mr. Broadbent?
So I've been working on evaluations. My goals have been done in April. We started looking at schedules for next year, the counselors, and meeting with kids and parents. Got a lot of good classes, as I mentioned last meeting, that we're looking forward to next year. Posted a couple of positions. Going to start interviewing for the English position probably in the next week or so. I'm pretty confident we're going to be able to find a good replacement for the updated accounting position right now. I'm excited about that. We've had some set meetings, we're working well with that. Accomplishing most of our goals. State test still up in there at this point. Just waiting for the state. It's about all the stuff.
Questions for Mr. Broadbent?
I don't have a lot to add. The elementary level, we've been really focusing on trying to come up with some very creative and fun ways to keep these kids busy while we maintain the New York state regulations of six feet, or a little bit closer with masks on. So we've started focusing on STEM activities in elementary, doing creative hands-on things. One of the kindergarten classes had students create their own instruments. And then Mrs. Kupka went in and taught them a melody and played on them. Our fourth grade has been studying the different species and habitats of different animals. So they created their own animal. They actually built their own animal to share with their classmates. And then they wrote something on where they would live, how they would do with that to survive. So we're just trying to be creative. I know a lot of the teachers are trying to get the kids outside a little bit more when we can and try to come up with some outdoor activities as far as field trips moving forward. And then the last month or so has been spent really trying to think about, you know, fourth quarter of the summer, how we're going to provide these interventions to the kids to get them caught up. We do see some improvements. I had a meeting with the RIT to go over our data recently. There's definitely some improvements, especially in three through six. We need to work a little bit more on those foundational skills in K-2, but they're coming along. And I think with everything that we'll be doing in fourth quarter and with summer, we should be able to get the majority of them caught up.
Any questions? Thank you, everyone. All right, motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Carson first, Jessica second, all in favor? Motion to go into executive session for appointment personnel matters, including review and appointment of employees and contract negotiations. Allen first, Jane second, all in favor?
Welcome back. We'll do the personnel report. Need motion to approve the resignation of Brandon Markell, middle school high school English teacher effective June 30th, 2021. Janine first, Peter second, all in favor? Thank you. Need a motion to approve the 2021-2022 district calendar. Jessica first, Janine second, all in favor? No? Yes, one. Motion to approve the bus proposition resolution to purchase four school buses at a maximum aggregate cost of approximately 421,505. Pete first, Carson second, all in favor? Discussion items, we'll start with budget workshop four.
So thank you, Ms. Schultz. So we'll get into our fourth budget workshop in a year for March. I'm gonna start this out a little bit differently tonight. You have some handouts in front of you that include the appropriation status report, the revenue report, and our reserves report. I'm gonna turn this over to Ms. Cross, and she'll take you through, I guess, firstly appropriations, and then the revenue report updates, and then our status of our reserves that we have, and we can answer any questions you have about any of that. And then I'll take you through the packet just to summarize, and then go from there for our workshop. So Ms. Cross?
The appropriations is pretty much straightforward. It's basically contractual stuff that was changed. Salaries, boces, special ed, AMICAT students. Start on page one, there's boces adjustment. Then salaries, for the rest of the time on that page. Page two is all boces and salary information that's changed. Stop me if you have any questions, because it's basically the same from last month. Page three, there's the boces and salaries. One thing on page three, about halfway down the page, is the $18,000 increase is the storage containers that we booked for purchase. And then two-thirds of the way down the page is the pickup truck to replace the state rack that we have in the second 1621 code. Which board is just boces and salary changes? Page five, again, boces and salaries. About two-thirds of the way down the page is the 2110-200 codes. There's a couple of pieces of our equipment that they requested for, they requested them last year, and we took them out. The big one is the kiln, and that one, when she tried to use it to throw sparks. That one I recommend that we definitely do. At the very bottom, I increased postage a little bit, just because the rates are going up steadily, and we haven't increased that many at all. On the bottom, page six, is where you'll see the supply lines, our platform supplies, and all of those have decreased. For that particular section, the total of $11,000, the supplies have dropped from last year's purchases, or requisitions. Page eight is more of the salaries. There's a tuition increase for one of our students that is out of district equipment. Page eight, again, salaries, our supplies have decreased in that top section. The rest of it is all salaries and boces. Down at the bottom, there's a decrease of 32,000, that's the E-Rate project that we completed this year, but we're not booking for next year, any rate project. Page nine, again, is all salaries and boces services changes. Page 10, salaries, a couple of supply lines that have decreased on that. Eleven is only one change, and that's a salary change. Page 12 is our benefits, retirement benefits, ERs and TRs, so they're contractuals. And the unemployment that we've added for this year, and health insurance was a 5% increase. It told us five, but possibly six, probably under that. On the top of the last page, you'll see under the construction bonds, 9711. This is the reduction due to the refunding. We combined those two projects and added lower interest rate on them, so that's part of that savings. Overall, we have $136,000 increase, which is 0.7%, which is basically flat.
Beth? I didn't hear you.
The total overall increase is $136,000, which is less than 1%, it's 0.7% for overall expenditure.
No, I just didn't hear what she said after she said that.
It's basically flat, and an 80% budget.
Oh, that's right, I didn't hear.
Okay, any questions?
Kind of quick, but basically nothing's changed since last month. So I want to just kind of summarize, like Ms. Cross said. As I think we've been kind of mentioning here throughout, there's been opportunities throughout this year to save and do some things, and there's a lot of reductions in this. So we've really taken a look at those reduction areas and tried to maximize them against the uncontrollable costs, which are the increases in salaries and things that we go through in this. We do have, you know, I'll go over a few items in the workshop packet that are in this budget for us to discuss too. But overall, you know, we talk generally about 2% we try to hang around with, and normal increases, and see if we can keep the increase at that number, sometimes it's not possible. But this year, we were able to take a look at, use savings and things like that to keep it under 1%. So essentially, as Ms. Cross has said, it's 0.7% right now, an increase, and that's, you know, pretty close to being flat for the year. We're gonna be all right with fuel oil and stuff, the way things look.
We usually have a surplus in fuel, typically. And we're still realizing some savings on the LED lights, the converter. That still is not another full year, but they've dropped some. We got a question? Anything else?
Yeah, we're gonna go through the revenue. Again, as I get into this, we'll talk about some key pieces in this budget that are in there, that we've been talking about for the last few months. You know, while you're in opportunity, I'll tell you as possible to the, or go through the revenue.
On the revenues, this is basically exactly the same as from last month. The only change that I made is I have a tax catch number now. Our actual tax catch is 0.77%, and I'm recommending a 0.75% tax increase, which is $38,000. The rest of the revenues are, we don't have any new budget numbers from the state. The rest of the revenues are all the same as they were last month. With the increases in state aid. We did finally get our CARES fund this, for this year. We got our first payment for that, which managed well.
Your first payment for what?
Our CARES, the federal CARES money.
Oh, okay, yeah, they finally approved that.
Just made our first payment, gave us our first payment.
Questions on any of that?
We had a couple of questions, you know, in the last couple of months. All the transportation aid that was in question is restored, that's all implied. So that means a question of us using transportation during last spring has been restored, and there's been a promise of all aid ratios being the same going into. So.
Middle school, high school, English teacher effective June 30th, 2021. Janine first, Peter second, all in favor? Thank you. Need a motion to approve the 2021-2022 district calendar. Jessica first, Janine second, all in favor? No? Yes, one. Motion to approve the bus proposition resolution to purchase four school bus buses at a maximum aggregate cost of approximately $421,505. Pete first, Carson second, all in favor? Thank you. Discussion items, we'll start with budget workshop four.
So thank you, Ms. Schultz. So we'll get into our fourth budget workshop in a year for March. I'm gonna start this out a little bit differently tonight. You have some handouts in front of you that include the appropriation status report, the revenue report, and our reserves report. I'm gonna turn this over to this Crossit and she'll take you through, I guess, first the appropriations and then the revenue report updates and then our status of our reserves that we have. And we can answer any questions you have about any of that. And then I'll take you through the packet just to summarize and go from there for our workshop. So Ms. Crossit.
The appropriations is pretty much straightforward. It's basically contractual stuff that was changed with salaries, BOCs, maybe special ed, maybe tech students. Start on page one, there's BOC's adjustment. And salaries are the rest of what's on that page. Page two is all BOC's and salary information that's changed. Stop me if you have any questions because it's basically the same from last month. Page three, this is BOC's and salaries. One thing on page three, about halfway down the page, is the $18,000 increase is the storage containers that we booked for purchase. And then about two-thirds of the way down the page is the truck, the pickup truck to replace the stake rack that we have in the second 1621. Which board is just BOC's and salary changes? Page five, again, BOC's and salaries. About two-thirds of the way down the page is the 2110-200 codes. There's a couple of pieces of our equipment that they requested for, they requested them last year and it took them out. The big one is the kiln and that one when she tried to use it to throw sparks. So that one I recommend that we definitely do. At the very bottom, I increased postage a little bit just because the rates are going up steadily and having increased that then involved. On the bottom, page six is where you'll see the supply lines, our platform supplies, and all of those have decreased. For that particular section, the total of $11,000, the supplies have dropped from last year purchases or requisitions. Page eight is more of the salaries. They have a tuition increase for one of our students that is out of district equipment. Page eight, again, the salaries, the supplies have decreased in that top section. The rest of it is all salaries and BOC's. Down at the bottom, there's a decrease of $32,000. That's the E-rate project that we completed this year, but we're not booking for next year, any E-rate project. Page nine, again, is all salaries and BOC's services changes. Page 10, salaries, a couple of supply lines that have decreased on that. Eleven is only one change and that's a salary change. Page 12 is our benefits, retirement benefits, ERX and TRI, so they're contractuals. And the unemployment that we've added for this year, then health insurance was a 5% increase. It told us five, but possibly six, probably. On the top of the last page is, you'll see under the construction bonds, 9711. This is the reduction due to the refunding. We combined those two projects and added lower interest rate on them. So that's part of that savings. Overall, we have $136,000 increase, which is 0.7%, which is an 18,000 dollars, which is basically flat.
Beth? I didn't hear you.
The total overall increase is $136,000, which is less than 1%, it's 0.7% for overall these financials.
No, I know, I just didn't hear what she said after she said that.
It's basically flat.
Oh, that's what I did. Thank you.
Okay, any questions? Kind of quick, but like basically nothing's changed since the last month.
So I want to just kind of summarize, like Ms. Crossit. As I think we've been kind of mentioning here throughout, there's been opportunities throughout this year to save and do some things. And there's a lot of reductions in this. So we've really taken a look at those reduction areas and tried to maximize them against the uncontrollable, the uncontrollable costs, which are the increases in salaries and things that we go through in this. We do have, you know, I'll go over a few items in the workshop packet that are in this budget for us to discuss too. But overall, you know, we talk generally about 2% we try to hang around with and normal increases and see if we can keep the increase at that, at that number. Sometimes it's not possible. But this year, we were able to take a look at, use savings and things like that to keep it under 1%. So essentially, as Ms. Crossit said, it's 0.7 right now, an increase. And that's, you know, pretty close to being flat for the year. We're gonna be all right with fuel oil and stuff, the way that things look.
We usually have a surplus in fuel, typically. And we're still realizing some savings on the LED lights, the converter. That still is now another full year, but they've dropped some. The prices for that.
Any other questions? Anything else?
Yeah, we're gonna go through the revenue. Again, as I get into this, we'll talk about some key pieces in this budget that are in there that we've been talking about for the last few months. You know, while you're in opportunity, I'll tell you as possible through the, or go through the revenue portion right now.
On the revenues, this is basically exactly the same as from last month. The only change that I made is I have a tax cap number now. Our actual tax catch is 0.77%. And I'm recommending a 0.75% tax increase, which is $38,000. The rest of the revenues are, we don't have any new budget numbers from the state. The rest of the revenues are all the same as they were last month. With the increases in the state aid. We did finally get our CARES money this, for this year. We got our first payment for that, which managed well.
Your first payment for what?
Our CARES, the CARE, the federal CARES money.
Oh, okay, yeah. They finally approved that and just made our first payment, gave us our first payment. Questions on any of that?
We had a couple of questions, you know, in the last couple of months. All the transportation aid that was in question is restored. That's all implied. So that mean a question of us using transportation during last spring has been restored. And there's been a promise of all aid ratios being the same going into. So all that's come out of Albany since our last meeting. So some of the things that were a little uneasy in terms of expense-based aid seem to be flowing as of right now. Again, we'll have to watch all of this in the years ahead, but looking at this particular year budget, everything is flowing as well as well.
Does the CARES reimburse actual expenses or give you a sentimental?
We have to justify what the expenses are that will reimburse you. That's basically PPE, any additional labor, for completing staff, I'm coming through that.
Could you do any training through that too? Could you repeat the question?
It did qualify for training, but I didn't.
Yeah, sorry. I asked if it's for actual expenses or if it's like a certain amount that you could...
It's a specific dollar amount and it's, we can only use it for specific expenses. PPE, like the additional cleaners, we can pay their salaries through it. That's what we allotted all of it for.
Any further questions on the revenues at this point? Ms. Crossit, take us to the reserves, just to give everyone an update on our reserves that we have at this point.
Our reserves originally opened, we opened for $935,000. Interest is not great, so we gave $285 on that $935,000. I've got the breakdown on the paper of how much each reserve is set for and how much we gave to each one.
So again, taking you through, again, just for a review, the reserves for the workers' compensation, the reserves for local retirement. We are asked, and then the reserves for the teachers' retirement are the reserves that we currently have. And as Ms. Crossit mentioned, the reserves currently hold $935,285 and we sent.
These are the most liquid reserves that we can do, so that, didn't know when you came back this time.
What was that, Kelly?
So these are the most liquid reserves that we can put them in.
Yes.
Not knowing that the pandemic was gonna hit, it's actually worked out good for us because if we need to grab some of this, we can't have any problems.
What kind of fund balance are we looking at?
For this year? I'm looking at 1.3 so far. We've actually, I think we will grow some, an additional 1.3. I think we will grow some because of the, just the inability for transportation and sports.
So is there any questions on the reserves? I want to take you through the packet as well and highlight some things for you that Ms. Crossit just went through in those numbers, so you can associate some of these things specifically with the numbers.
We need to borrow, when we borrow from that, take back, I mean, we've got...
For the reserves?
Yeah, we only $285 a buck more than, well, borrow money.
Yep.
Some time, borrow money because through the summer or through the...
Yeah, so the retirement reserve, I can take money out here to save a bill, which is not a problem.
When you, when all of you established those reserves, we started out, as Mr. Dr. Tim talked about, starting out with those liquid ones. So they answered Mr. Mark, as you know, reinforced what Mr. Mark said, yeah, these are liquid. So if we need to get to them, we go back and then put back into it, we can, we can do that very easily. So I want to take you into the packet a little bit, the budget workshop packet now that you had in your, in your folders. If you can turn to, I think it's the third page in here, I'm gonna start there. I've got a couple of charts in, on the third page of your workshop packet. It says budget workshop four. I want to take you through a little bit of the history of our budget. Again, I always like to reflect back on what we've done the last few years and including that and then talk a little bit about the tax levy itself, to answer any questions you might have on that. So as you look at, you know, and I took you back basically the last five years, 17, 18, you can see the percent increases in our budget over the past four years. We still have that one anomaly year with 18, 19, where we had the, excuse me, factor in the, the building project that was coming off. But as you look down through, you'll see that the percentage increase, and there's a, it looks like there's a type on there.
The number changed that year, I gave you this.
Okay, I'm sorry. So if you look at our projected, you can see through, we were 1.5, 2.2, 2.4, 2.8. So we like to stay in that range. This year, as Ms. Crossit just mentioned, it was 0.4, although it is 0.7 in terms of our increase. So that projected number that's on the bottom is a 0.70 increase, less than 1%. So moving on to the tax levy portion, as Ms. Crossit said, the cap this year is 0.77%, less than 1% for our district this year. Recommendation of what's currently in our budget line is 0.75 or three quarters of a percent increase with that. I want to, I want to highlight this a little bit and answer any questions or, and Ms. Crossit answer any questions on this if you have any. What I included on here, if you look at a percentage of the prior year, you'll notice that these aren't really the numbers that we, we put in there. We had, you know, a 1% increase, a 2% increase, we put some of those in there. This is the true Indiana revenue decline that you get based on the true value of properties and so forth that are in there. So if you look at the last four years, the tax revenue actually has gone backwards from, from what we were at in terms of the tax cap. So when the tax cap comes in, I wanna, you know, although we don't generate a ton of revenue on 1%, you know, we're, our revenue really is a, is a factor of the true value of properties in the area. And as that true value goes down, so do the amount of tax revenue that comes in from those values. So I just want to show you that. So when, you know, we, we have low tax increases at times, it doesn't always mean that we're going to get 2% or we're gonna get that 1% 5% increase because of the way those values come up. We don't really have any control over that. But this is a look at the last few years when we've, we've passed our tax, tax levies for the year where we're at. So this year, we're looking at 0.75. Anything after that?
The overall levy total increases.
Right.
But the per taxpayer total typically decreases.
Right. All right. So is there any questions on the budget or the tax levy in here at this point in time? Okay. If you flip over to the next page of this, I want to just highlight a couple of things. I want to mention the community schools aid, which is in our foundation aid, is $100,000. That is used to support most of our support services, our therapies, our social workers and so forth within our programs. So that money, again, has to be earmarked for certain things out of the foundation. That was a question we had earlier. Again, we have plenty to earmark for this, so this is not an issue for us. It does support a lot of our counseling, social work, summer programs, those kinds of things we use this money for. The next category is the enrollments. The enrollments are essentially the same as I presented to you last month. There's an additional, we, we made a mistake and put two elementaries in there for you. I believe there's 325 students, excuse me, currently in the elementary and there are 316 students currently on the roster in the high school. That is pretty flat over the last few years. We've been pretty steady with our, with our enrollment. I believe we are at around 30 registrations. Holmes, you know that right now?
Yeah, about 30.
For kindergarten this year right now, which is pretty normal. Our kindergarten class right now is going to, you have that number again, Mrs. Holmes, where we're at now in kindergarten?
Kindergarten, we're up to 46.
So our, our kindergarten has significantly grown since the start of the year. So we're at 46 kindergartners, where I think we started with 30 something to begin school year. So for whatever reason, this year kindergarten's been our year to get kids. So that's increased. We're at 30 or so registrations. I would expect that to be back in the 40s again next year. Typically, I, I much, I mentioned this in the past. I usually add 10 or so to the number that they registered when we, when we do budgets. So if we're at low 30s, it tends to be around low 40s. Excuse me. Staffing, replacement, there are no known retirements at this time. We are adding no additional staff, only replacing current staff, where those openings will exist this year, so we have not had any increases in that. For the secondary, I talked about programming. All of this is about programming for kids. The online academy for any AP students that want to go further, we have available. We have multiple college now opportunities, AP classes. We are implementing computer-based testing. Obviously, that's become even more of a factor with everything going on right now. We are continuing to work with the state education department, implementing the ESA recommendations and using the money that we receive from the federal government in terms of ESA to supplement and support what we're doing here at the district. Technology, obviously, we have one-to-one devices for everyone in this building at this point in time. The next step would be supporting all of those devices as we go forward and replacement plans and maintaining that. So we don't want to go backwards. We built ourselves to one-to-one in this building and we want to continue to maintain that in the years ahead. In the elementary school, we certainly, Mrs. Holmes brought this up earlier, we are really taking a look at what, I shouldn't say just the elementary, because we got to look at it across the board, but the COVID-19 impact, especially on foundational skills, the early learners, the reading at the early ages where, where, you know, we get ourselves going here. So our summer programs are gonna be really focused on that this year in terms of making sure that we get our, our students at the lower grades into strong literacy skills and mathematics skills and so forth over the summer. Obviously, COVID-19 and the impact of scheduling is gonna impact everybody in some way. I don't know if we'll know exactly what that impact would be for years to come, but we're gonna do our best to address that. We've already started to do some of those things right now and address those, any issues we think. Which is, summer support services are, are basically guided toward that primary level in the, in the elementary under the plan. Again, we're taking all of our recommendations for ESA in terms, recommendations from state and putting those into our plans and implementing them into our systems. Computer-based testing is, we use a great deal of computer-based testing right now, especially in school, in our schools with the one-to-one devices. That will only increase as we go on in time, even with the state testing. Makerspace is an area where we have hands-on advanced technology things. We got off to a great start with that and then hands-on things kind of went away here a little bit, but that's not gone. We're gonna continue to, to keep promoting those kinds of things in the elementary. And obviously, across the board, old schools, this next generation learning standards, we got to continue to, to move forward toward that. And as we, as we hopefully get toward more normalcy here, these are things that, you know, are all gonna be continuing to be on our agenda. The support services, I've talked about this, you know, we have counselors, we have a psychologist, we have a social worker, we have physical therapy, we have occupational therapy, you know, social work and counseling and support. OT and PT are gonna be so important for kids right now. So these, these support services with community schools and how we identify those areas of need are really important. When we get to the facility, Ms. Crossit mentioned these things, we've talked about these, the equipment replacement plan currently in the budget has purchase of a pickup truck with a V plow and the sale of our state, stake rack truck. Obviously, we're under estimates of what that sale will cost and where we can get for the stake rack truck. Obviously, the less cost into the budget for the purchase. We are looking to purchase the two storage containers that we are currently renting. Obviously, we pay monthly fees. It's something we're gonna be able to use in the long term. We've discussed that in here and we're, we're looking to move forward with that. Last month, I mentioned some of the drainage work down in the lower soccer field that we would like to get done this summer. This is very minimal cost, I think 5,000 or so, in terms of, 5,000 to 6,000 in terms of drainage, that's in this budget. And we're talking about the secondary soccer field at the base of the hill where the water runs out. If you flip over to the next page, transportation, we passed the resolution to put this on the vote for MAG for our, for our public vote. Again, continues our five-year bus replacement. It is three large school buses and one small bus. It's not a wheelchair bus, as I mentioned and I made a note on your packet. The transportation aid has been restored from last year and it has been committed to continue at the current rate we receive at this point. In the athletic area, we have the continuation of the uniform replacement plan, which is included in your packet for next year. We have currently in there the purchase of football in girls' varsity basketball uniforms for next year, the continuation of our current athletic options for our student athletes and the addition, potential addition, I should say, of a modified track coach to support our current programs. And again, that's, that's a piece of negotiations, but again, just to take me into consideration that portion. That's all in Ms. Crossit's budget she has. In terms of technology, I, I mentioned these things over and over again, E-rate, ESA, multi-year agreements, that's how we support our technology. Those are able ways of doing that. Some of it is just, you know, ASA funds are outright provided in terms of grant money, so we don't have any, any payout back on that. So we try to maximize that. We're creating multi-year plans with the REC to support the one-to-one devices because obviously they have a lifespan to them. So we have to keep that rotation and, you know, guys like Justin and Mr. Stone are, help us to support those things in our technology departments and create plans that'll help support that for years ahead. We always look at our security, our connectivity, our computer systems, the digital systems in the building, the switches, the wireless access points, all those things, the wiring, the fiber, all those things are all part of what we look at to try to maintain everything that's going on in this building. The reserves, we went over with you today, we're looking at 900,000 plus that are in the three reserves we have at this point in time. So we've done a good job of maintaining them. That's access to money that we can get to, as was asked earlier, if we need to, in terms of hard times, we're doing pretty well right now with, with that. And just to give you an overall summary of what we're looking at here, we're looking to continue and develop and support our technology programs and resources, support our foundational skills as students transition and prepare them for the high school. Our AP and college now programs are strong. We have advanced online programs for kids that want to take the next step as well. 21st century skills, enhanced support services for our special needs students. The mental health needs are, are supported in this budget and we know how important that's going to be. The summer support for our students in need, especially at this time, is in here. Our requirements that, that we must meet under ESA in the federal government and the state education department are in here. We're looking at our equipment in our facilities and trying to maintain safe playing fields and safe equipment to maintain them. We're looking at all different ways to enhance our efficiency in our facility maintenance and obviously, we continue with our bus replacement plan. Included in here, again, is the executive budget. The budget hasn't been passed in Albany as of yet, so we'll wait to hear what the final budget is. But again, this typically is our worst-case scenario in terms of the governor's proposal. We are essentially flat, we're up a couple of percent slightly in terms of our aid from last year. So, you know, we budget with that in mind. Hopefully, we'll get more and that'll only help our revenue stream. The next pages are the enrollments that I already mentioned, 325 in the elementary, and then you have an official one for the mistaken packet at 318 in the high school currently. I mentioned we have 30 something registrations right now for kindergarten. I've also included in here our out-of-district placements, Christian Heritage School, Notre Dame Elementary, and St. Francis Sales in Herkimer. The next page, which is included already in the budget, is our rate reference chart, there are no changes, no increases or decreases on that chart. Uniform replacement plan is here with the current budgeted items of football and girls' varsity basketball. The next page is the equipment replacement plan, which is the storage containers and the truck with the sale of the stake rack truck in here. And those are, that concludes the packet. Those are the highlighted items that we have in the budget that currently has, as we mentioned, a 0.70 increase with the recommended tax levy at this time of three quarters percent. So with that and all the information, all the numbers and the overview that Ms. Crossit and I presented to you, I'm open to answering any questions, additions, subtractions, comments, things that you would like adjusted at this time before we return in April to the April meeting, which is the meeting where we generally pass our budget for the next school year.
Any questions? Thank you. I should continue to work through that.
Thank you.
Capital project, up there?
So as I mentioned, I've been waiting to receive sort of a list of items. And the initial focus as we, under the early stages of our project development... And the initial focus as we, under the early stages of our project development, are, have a focus, a direct focus on mechanical, electrical plumbing and those types of issues when it comes to this. Now, there are obviously discussion items about things that we want to take a look at and I'm sure there are things that aren't on this list and beyond, or there may be some things on this list that you do have questions about in terms of this. But I really wanted you to have sort of an overview with a real conservative cost estimate of what some of these items might cost in terms of a future project. And again, I don't want to get too hung up on the overall numbers or any individual-type numbers because those, as we know, change and they're always inflated when we first start to look at this. But I do want to give you an idea of the work that is developed through inspections, through five-year building inspection plans and just different items that I think at least, for the most part, with this project, we need to take a look at. And we certainly could take a look at more. We could take a look at less. We could take a look at other items that are beyond the basic foundation of the building, the facilities. But I wanted to give you an idea and take you through some of this stuff so you do know where we're at at this point in time. With that being said, before I even get, I do want to talk a little bit about numbers. We mentioned this a while ago when we had an early review with Dr. Timms of our numbers. So, Ms. Crossit, can you just take us through a little bit about financials in terms of tax impact and what we're looking at at this point in time? So they have a feel, as I go through this, of the size of the project that we'd be looking at?
They recommended for us that a $4.2 million project would add a 1% impact on the taxes, on overall taxes. Don't we have the other numbers? With me, they gave you 2%.
Do you hear that?
Kelly, I can't hear you.
Yeah, so I'll give you that, Mr. Kamer. If, for a 1% impact on the taxpayers, that would be a $4.2 million project. So if you went 4.2, there would be a 1% impact on the taxpayers. And then you're going to work yourself back from there, you know, to your zero if you want to have a 0% impact, which would be somewhere in the range of, somewhere in the range of 2. something. Right around $2 million. So it's not an exact cut and half science there either. So it'd be right around $2 million if we want to have essentially a non-impact at all impact. So I'm going to take you through, if it's okay, and bear with me a little bit here. I want to take you through the list. I'll start with the high school side. Some of the items that are included in this bottom part. Again, I don't want you to get too hung up on the total number at the bottom because obviously, we would hope to get this far less than this. But auditorium lighting, so that's, you know, we're in the auditorium. This is what you're looking at in here of upgrading these to more efficient lighting, LED-type lighting in the auditorium. The carpeting that you see in this auditorium was reviewed and looked at. You're going to see this as kind of a common theme throughout this. The exhaust systems that we have in this building and the fans and so forth going through and replacing all the old exhausts. There's one in, there's some in the gymnasium and there's going to be some in other places in terms of exhaust systems. Gymnasium lighting, you'll see that in both buildings, converting to the more efficient LED lighting that we can have in there in the gymnasiums. That's the only places that we don't have that right now, the auditorium and those two gymnasium areas. The controls, obviously, for those lights. The next item down is the pool decommunication unit. That's what we've been talking about for years. It's still on our plan. That's the unit that's on the roof that we need for the pool area. So that's an item that must get taken care of. While we're in the pool area, we're taking a look at all the pool systems, from pumps to jets to drains and all the things, serviceable things that need to be maintained and upgraded to keep the pool lasting for years to come. We're looking at pool finishes, the painting, the ceilings, the walls, the acoustics in the pool area. Downstairs, we've looked at our domestic water tanks that are downstairs and the water equipment and the storage tanks that are there. You'll see utility controls. There are various utility controls. We refer to them sometimes as pneumatic controls. There are some. Most of our controls have been converted over in the train system to the electronic system where we can control them, but we still have some original pneumatic where you have to individually adjust and they're inefficient systems that we have on this list. There's some upgrades in the boiler room, not the boilers, but some other digital controls that are down there that go along with all these pneumatic changes. The PA system and the phone system has been something that we've been looking at for many years. Again, you'll notice on this, we still have not tapped into our Smart Schools bond or our Smart Schools funding here. That could be something that we could, you know, use that money for and take it off of this list. But again, we want to look at it in terms of a project cost. We have gymnasium, the entry doors into the gymnasiums in both buildings. The replacement of both entry doors, which are beginning to wear out at that point, especially on the elementary, the original ones. Again, you'll see exhaust fans there on that list. That is the high school side of the review at this point in time. If you flip over to the next page, I want to talk just a little bit about things we're looking at in the elementary. Stairwell, there, we talked about this before with some different things. You have stairwell, three stairwells over in the elementary side, the middle one and the two handcuffs. The architectural design of that building has created an issue up there that you've had for quite some time, where the sloped small roofs connected the main part of that building and the design of that, when we get certain types of rain, allow that water to get into that area. And there's been times where we've had to replace and do some drywall work in those areas and so forth. And we have replaced those roofs that are there. So you have the metal roofs on that back side, but there's a design issue that needs to be corrected in there as we have the architects look at. And it's really with the way the building. This happened before and we put the new roofs on and although I think it's helped a great deal, obviously, there are still times where there is water coming in there. I think it's something you need to look at and address as we go forward. So that's what we're talking about with the water penetration that's there. Stairwell railings. As you look at your middle stairwell in the elementary, you have, the original design of that is wide-open railings. As you come down the stairs and there's an elevated balcony, if you can picture that in the elementary from the upstairs portion of that. One of the safety items that we're looking at there is creating a little bit of a more elevated protection area in that two sets of stairwells. So in theory, we wouldn't have any opportunity for any children or anything to happen where a kid could get over that railing and get themselves hurt. You may have recalled a few years back in one of the local school districts that happened. I happened to see the design of that stairwell and it was very similar to our design here. So we're looking at ways we can make those elementary stairwells from upstairs to downstairs a little safer and protect against any issues with that.
Do you have an elevator?
We do.
I just can't picture where it is.
Yeah, it's right at the bottom of that middle stairwell.
Okay, it's right off to the right?
Right to the right.
Okay.
Yep, yep. So you'll see, you could basically cross off the next item, that gymnasium heating system. Those are the heating units that are hanging from the elementary gym. There was some discussion about getting that off of the ceiling and putting them on the roof, but since then, we've basically got away from that. We're not really looking to do anything with that. The gymnasium lighting, as I mentioned, and the controls. Downstairs, water heaters that are used for the elementary side. Again, more utility controls and exhaust fans and the entry doors, as I mentioned. That's the elementary side. So we've done a lot of work, obviously. The elementary list is pretty short there in terms of essentials, I would say. The bus garage, we have a cement area that's unfinished cement floor that's in the office areas in there. We're looking to put some flooring on there mainly for safety reasons. That cement, whenever it gets wet, winter time, is really slippery in there. We're looking to put some more BCT in there. You have basically all your original lighting in there. You have, that we're looking to replace, you have the diesel fuel storage tank, which is 35 years old, 1985. It is an underground storage tank. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ray and Ms. Crossit, that's the diesel fuel for the buses, okay? That tank is at its, past its lifespan. So we're looking to, at this point in time, bring that above the ground and get it out of the ground with a replacement. There's hanging, very old hanging heating units that are in the bus garage itself. Those units are obviously not very efficient and they're aging and there's hanging lighting units that should be there as well that are old and sort of inefficient in that bus garage area. If you flip over to the next, the one area of site work, which I know we've talked about for a few years since last project, is creating a bleacher system that would go along that hillside, along the track and football field there. So we're looking at, you know, where you basically would be on the walkway cement and you would walk down into the bleachers there. I believe they're estimating some cost at a seating of 500 people or 600 people on that with handicap accessible. So we did have them take a look at the bleacher work and so forth. We're looking at our drinking fountains. I might have mentioned this in the past discussion about projects. I think your push-button drinking fountains are going to be a thing of the past here. They're going to be filling stations, so although this won't be a huge thing, we don't have a ton of them around here, we would be looking at, you know, converting them to bottle filling stations and so forth. There are some alternates that we looked at here and these were just some ideas that were left over from past discussions and projects that never really made it. Obviously, our band room that's on the backside of this stage here. We have a growing band. The design of that space with the offices and lesson rooms, we took a look at potential remodel of that as an alternate area. The performance lighting on the stage here, that's a, these are pretty costly items, just so we know that. We took a look at, you know, getting our auditorium performance lighting upgraded and we have two bathrooms that are handicap accessible. There's nothing that needs to be done in that sense. But when we redid some of the bathrooms in the last, we re-tiled and did some things to upgrade them and, for lack of a better word, modernize the tile and make it look like you have a few bathrooms in the middle school and the one that's out here that's still the original tiling and things in there. So we had them look at those, would match the other bathrooms again and put that under there as well. So, again, I don't want to get too hung up on the numbers. I'm more concerned with what we want to get done and what you like here, what you don't like here, what's not here that you want me to look into further for you. So you'll see $4.2 million just on the top portion of that. Again, very conservative cost there, I would say, at this stage of the game. But who knows, you know, you've got to be, you've got to overestimate at this time, especially with the increasing costs and things that have been thrown up here, so escalation. So that's an overall review of your mechanicals, your plumbing and your electrical in this building. You know, it's not extremely exciting things to talk about with the exception of the bleacher, which was a separate thing. And I know there's other items that we could look at in here, but I wanted to give you an idea of things I think you should at least consider as you look forward here. Questions, comments, thoughts that anybody has on this currently at this point? Other things you'd like our project team at LeChase and Synthesis to look into further in cost for those types of things?
Were we going to look at air conditioning? I was just going to ask that here.
So I can look at a lot of air conditioning. I can look at those costs for you and bring you a report. I talked to them about it a little bit.
Especially on the elementary side, the classrooms?
So, so I know Mr. Kamer in the past has brought up the air conditioning in this auditorium, elementary.
Would it be just the back side upstairs or was it both sides that it's hot?
So.
You know, bottom floor, top floor?
So if you're talking about the hottest rooms in the whole place, you're going to be upstairs, back side. That's the sunny side on the track side. Those are the hottest rooms. In general, there's no air conditioning in this entire building. So, you know, the whole elementary tends to be a little bit warmer in the early fall and late spring, maybe if we get there. Obviously, here, the space in here, we're using it during normal times. There's another space, but you don't have any air conditioning. The complication with the air conditioning is I would expect it to be pretty significant in cost when I have them do the review for it. The way the systems are set up here and so forth, you know, if you were going to talk about true air conditioning, we'd be looking at separate units on the roof that would cover a group of classrooms and pods. The other thing I know that we discussed before, and I think Mr. Marco brought it up, where the unit, the wall units, that's another area that I can look at and see what that can do. But again, those have to be covered as well. So there's some different things I could have them look at. It's just sort of the level and extent that you want me to have them look at and the amount of air conditioning that you want me to look at and the priorities that would be.
Was that a new heating system put in there at all?
The, the univacs are all brand-new in there, yes.
Don't they block cool air or?
They bring in a lot of outside air. They're, yeah. I know. So that's the issue. When we talked about masks in the beginning, you know, and they said, we've got to start bringing in more percentage of outside air. You know, that's good for quality. In the same token, if it's hot out, we bring it in more outside. So, air conditioning, I mean, there's no, I can't sugarcoat that discussion. Air conditioning is going to be very costly.
What about like off the windows to block some of the sun? Like get like a little?
Some sort of shading?
Yeah.
Canopy?
There's those trees back there to block it.
Wouldn't hurt to get some cost though for AC in here and? What?
Oh, my dairy definitely.
You see the odd AC in elementary? Get your cost from both so you can get an idea?
Just so they have an idea.
Yep.
Yeah.
Pass that along. Are there other things that I didn't mention? I mean, I certainly won't answer any questions about the mechanicals and all the things that you have, it's testing my ability. But are there other items that you've had in mind that you want me to look into? Aside from what I have? Is there anything that you're, at this point in time, against? Looking at at this point?
So all needed items to maintain the building?
So I knew, the way the projects are broken down and the way, you know, we've done them in the past and how they are coming off and what we have, you know, you're probably, other than as we start to plan for any sort of capital reserve fund that we want to have potentially to do things, you know, I think people on this board that have been here have heard about $100,000 projects and things like that. Aside from those, you know, in terms of our future planning, you know, we're some years out before you have a project, another project come off. So as I mentioned in our last meeting, that was where, you know, I spent some time and Kelly and Mr. Ray, we spent some time with LeChase and Synthesis and said, I really want to look at the aging things that are here so that, you know, 10 years from now, we're not talking about something we should have got done in these last couple of projects, we would have had some opportunity. And I had no idea, even in the last month, what that would mean in terms of numbers for everybody. So, you know, you're, in your mechanicals, I mean, you're conservatively looking at around, if I were to get this number and do some things, you know, you're looking at $2 to $3 million in just mechanicals, electrical, just, those are numbers you're going to be looking at, even though it says 4.2 here.
I think the fuel storage was on the last discussion and I think we pulled that out in the last.
So the fuel tank and the dehumidifying unit are two items that have to be done. You've got a 35-year-old diesel tank and you've got a dehumidifying unit that doesn't really function. It is completely outdated, that needs to be replaced for sure. And we went down cellar, Mr. Anderson was down there with us as well. We went through all the mechanicals in the cellar, all the pool. We went through all the building mechanicals with the architects in the project team. Looked at all the pneumatics, looked at the exhaust fans that haven't been replaced. A lot of them have. We've done a lot of them, but there are still exhaust fans. Obviously, that becomes more of a focus with everything going on, the airflow studies and all those kinds of things. So, you know, there's a pretty extensive list of things that we can get done tonight. Getting these things done will certainly set the facility up for. Getting these things done will certainly set the facility up for, for the future for sure.
I do, I do think you need to look into the cost of air, the elementary building and here.
Yep.
And I would prefer going in that direction over putting in bleachers at a football field that we don't even know where to have football in the next two years. And you're looking at the big sport route here. I love the sports here, but I think you need to, um, prioritize some of these things.
Okay. So what I'll do for everybody is I'll get some costs on air conditioning, so you can get an idea of what those type are for the elementary school itself and for the auditorium, give you an idea of numbers. And I'll have them look at some different variables and different options in terms of what we, we have available in this building. So, um, and also look at, you know, coverings and things that you talked about, see if there's some things we could do with that. We'll shade that backside.
Eliminate it at least, or?
Yeah.
Now, is there any way to get smaller bleachers? I mean, do you, how many times do you have five?
Yeah, so, so, so we can look. So I, yeah, like, go, I don't want you to get too hung up with numbers and design of that. This is just a general idea. It was something that was on the list after we had the last project, and I know everybody talked a little bit about having bleachers out there, so I kept it, uh, for now, for them to price that, what that would look like.
Well, if they continue to do outside graduations, they would be useful too.
Yep. You, you, you know, you're hosting, we're, you know, you're hosting, you've been hosting prior to COVID, the track meets, the, the sectionals, the regional things we did here, league meets, you know, there's, um, you know, a couple of things with that. The hill, the hill became, yeah, so before we did the work on the back, which was great work, that hill was a little more gradual in terms of people using the hill to stand on. Well, to build that, up that large sidewalk area and to bring that out a little bit further and widen that, that created a little bit of a steeper incline on that hill. So, nobody's really standing on the side hill anymore. So, you know, you're up on top or you get yourself down by the fence. Uh, those are your two spots right now. So, yeah, I mean, we can expand, do whatever we want to do with that, cost of it, take a look at that. It's more of an idea, do you want this? And again, I wouldn't get into too much right now of, of sacrificing things right now. Let's see what we can do and, you know, and that could become an alternate at some point. You know, we could say, okay, we're gonna prioritize this, Mr. Cameron said. We want these indefinitely, and if there's, the bids come in and we're lower, these are our alternates. We want to put this in, we want to do this one. And those of you that weren't really a part of that last project, you know, we get alternatives. Generally, we're really conservative and hopefully we do good with the bidding, do well with the bidding and, and we get our numbers and we get to do more than we want. So it's, it's really important. There'll be a long list of alternates that will develop as this project goes, um, so. And then we gotta decide. We have to decide, you know, what we want the size of the project to be, you know, and, and that's kind of what we're giving you tonight to give you an idea in your own hat of things, and these numbers start to become a little more defined as we start to prioritize them and go from there. Any other questions or comments or things about the capital project? I'll certainly take everything you gave me tonight and to the Lechase and Synthesis and go from there and bring up update next one hopefully.
All right, the district-wide safety plan?
So the district-wide safety plan, this is something you approve every single year. Um, in the summertime, we have, we, we have our public comment period and then we approve it, and then it gets posted on our website, it gets submitted to the state education department, um, and so forth. It goes along with our building level, uh, confidential plan that also gets approved. Well, during COVID here, a new executive regulation came out and, uh, it required us to basically put in, um, a list of pandemic essential employees or employee, um, titles that would be required if we were ordered to all go home again someday in a pandemic. Hopefully that never happens ever again. But if we, if it were, who are the people that could not do their job at home if we were forced? Um, so really, the only thing that's changed in this whole thing are the last two pages, which are 28 and 29, and I gave you a separate staple, so you didn't even need to go through the big packet there, uh, of that. So as you look through, we have building mechanic, custodians, cleaners, groundskeepers, bus drivers, auto mechanics, food service helpers, me, superintendent, business manager, facility directors, office management, building principals, directors of special education, and our monitors. So this is a list of employees that it would be challenging, not to say there couldn't be anything that could be done at home if we were forced to be, but in general, these are the people that continue to remain in person when we could, um, and we were permitted to do so. So we have to have that list, which wasn't a part of the original plan, include this list, get it approved by the board. It does not, I found out today, it does not need to be resubmitted for approval. It just needs to be approved by the board and reposted on our website. Uh, there was no public comment during the public comment period. Does anybody have any questions on the district-wide safety plan? If there are no questions, I, you'll need to.
The essential.
You'll, you're gonna have to approve the West Canada Valley District-wide School Safety Plan.
All right. I need a motion to approve the West Canada Valley District-wide School Safety Updated Plan. Carson first, Jessica second, Alan in favor? Thank you. All right, athletics?
Okay, so athletics, as, as restrictions, we start to get lifted, um, as we've done the last few months, and we start to revisit, things are, and, and seasons are developed and, um, sports are being permitted to be played and so forth. Um, I bring these changes to us every month, um, and we take a look at these sports and, and have to make some decisions on if we would like to move forward. Um, the first sport that I'm bringing forward tonight is a sport that is typically done in groups at local college sites, which are not permitting, um, obviously schools to bring teams and bring those such, uh, such large gatherings, um, to their facilities. So, um, the track, um, committees, uh, throughout section three have got together in hopes of trying to create a system or a situation where, um, indoor track and those events and those, um, distances and, and so forth could be done at the home site of the schools that want to participate with an official there and an official timer, and the meets would be conducted virtually against all the schools or against individual schools or against dual meet schools that would like to participate in that, okay? Um, these meets would be run outdoors on the tracks at the facilities. They would obviously not have any indoor type aspect to it as were the traditional indoor track meets. Um... The teams at this point in time, I, this is a, this is a list of teams across section three that I have. At this point, it could grow depending on how schools and, and different school boards are looking at this. Currently, Poland, Camden, RFA, Clinton, Tully, Fabius, and VBS are the schools that, um, have committed at this point in time to having this season of indoor track, uh, outside. The season would run essentially from March 9th tomorrow, uh, through April, I'm sorry, what am I just going to hear? Does it say? April 10th, thank you, on the background it says it. Through April 10th, um, everything would be outside, uh, for the events. We currently have on paper, uh, anywhere from 25 to 30 students who may be interested. I don't have a finalized number with that. Um, but it is something that is different from last month where I didn't think there was going to be anything associated with this because of the facility thing that has been approved by section three for those schools that want to participate. So, uh, with that being said, um, you know, I open this up for discussion and questions and so forth. Um, keeping in mind, um, you know, indoor and outdoor track are two different sports, uh, when it comes to seasons. Uh, the outdoor sport, the outdoor track season would basically roll off of this indoor track season, uh, and begin on, I believe Monday, April 19th would be the outdoor track season start. So, um, I open this up for questions, um, discussion, um, and hopefully some guidance in terms of how we wish to proceed as a district, uh, when it comes to permitting this season to move forward. Or saying this is just something that, you know, we, we don't want to entertain right now. Um, obviously it's tough to talk about track outside when you look at the field right now. It is going to get warm this week. I don't know where that'll take us.
So what will they do, do the events in the parking lot?
They won't do any events until the track's ready to go, so.
So they may not even get a?
So they're, they're gonna practice and we'll do outdoor practices and those kinds of things. They will not be running in the halls in here because we're not doing any sort of spreading indoor type of activities. They would be outside, um, and then as soon as the track is available and it's clear to be on, we'll be on it, and, uh, that we'd schedule. There is some flexibility with scheduling because we're not traveling and nor are the other schools traveling. So essentially, we could, um, you know, run a meet on Wednesday if it worked for us and compare our times to the other teams. It's similar to how they're doing with swimming and bowling and those kinds of things. So, questions, comments, discussion on indoor track, um, thoughts?
One week of it's when they're gonna break.
Yep, they'll still be here doing it, so practices we want.
They run practices and games during breaks, don't they?
Yep, yep.
They go for it if the weather allows it.
Are there other thoughts and comments, anybody else other than?
I meant, I meant the, um, oh, there's no page number. Word says spectators.
Yep.
It says in order to maximize capacity at the existing sites where student athletes require coaches, trainers, officials, spectators at indoor contest will not be allowed unless approved by the district prior to the contest.
Yep. For the indoor?
Are we the district? Okay, so, I'm, as long as we stay below that 3% or at 3%, what's the possibility of approving parents, at least parents, to go to the basketball games, see their kid play, following the directions on screenings? They meet all the requirements of screening?
So the, the step for me to look into, Mr. Cameron, with that would be to, uh, put in that request to public health, um, and so forth and see if the public, uh, Herkimer County Public Health and the, uh, district physicians, who has to be signed on this as well, would permit that to happen as long as all the protocols were met. And if they said yes, we would permit that. The next thing would be to notify, uh, the other districts in Herkimer County that we would be permitting parents into the building. Would you be, uh, would that include parents from the visiting teams, Mr. Cameron, in your mind, or the home team only?
What's that?
Would that be just the home parents, like, so on the, would our parents go on the road? Would we, like, uh, would we allow visiting parents to come here too?
To here?
To here, yes. So if we played Herkimer, Dazil, or whoever here, Dazil parents are those?
Oh, I don't know about that.
Okay.
That would have to be everybody's discussion also.
Yeah.
But for, for West Canada parents, if they meet the requirements of that screening, you go get your shot. You have to go through those questions.
Yep.
Ask each one that comes in. Somebody can, I mean, I can even run an F A team.
Yep.
I can do that, no problem.
I could certainly look into.
If there are 100 or more, they can't come in? That's when the security guard stands there and says, you're gonna temperature out, bye.
Yep. Yeah, I could certainly look into that for the indoor piece.
I mean, I, I think it should be looked into.
Okay.
It's just, I mean, parents can go to outdoor activities.
Yep.
True.
Yep.
These basketball players, no parents can go.
Yep.
It, it's a shame. They deserve to see their kid play too. Because I look, I'm just thinking just now, and I'm not putting you on the spot.
Yep.
You're the superintendent of the schools, but you're going to be there and your son is playing basketball.
Yeah.
So you're gonna get to see your son play.
Yep.
They're not, and I don't think it's fair.
Agree, but fortunately, we're, we're, our hands are tied with this, um, the ADMs, the guidances and all the CDC and New York State stuff, but I think what you're asking is to, you're asking DJ to contact the Department of Health and the physicians to amend our high-risk plan for indoor sports, because swimming's indoor, you know, I don't, I think if we're gonna do basketball, we're doing any high-risk indoor sport. If they all agree to that, if it's below 3%, West Canada Valley parents would be allowed to their child's event. Is that what you're asking?
Hmm. Yeah, I can look into that. Is there anybody here that is against having parents come into the games? Just keep in mind, there are two separate things going on here too, so we're, we're clearing, so, so JV parents would be there and then they would leave at the end, and then they clear it, and then varsity parents will come in, just like the teams are right now.
And it's for each game.
Yep.
Who are gonna get tested? Will you come in?
Right.
So, so I'll, I'll inquire if everybody is okay with that. I'll inquire with public health as soon as tomorrow and see where their thoughts are on all this.
That's just the way I feel. I don't know how anybody else feels. That's the way I feel.
Really, how many players do you have?
What's that?
How many players are on the team?
There's probably average of 10 each.
Are you gonna allow one parent to?
I'd allow four parents.
You got 20 parents, you got 20 parents. You cancel, you cancel social distance with them in that gym?
I know.
I could do it for you if you want me to.
Yep, I know I can.
And then have like one, I do like what they do at other facilities, you walk in one way and leave the other.
Yeah.
All right, so back to indoor, we'll, we'll look at that. So can we go now to indoor track?
So I just want to mention, I just want to say one more thing to that and then we'll go back to the indoor track. So I'll look into that. I, we definitely, West Canada Valley can social distance, we definitely can do all this. The only thing that would hang for me on the whole thing would be the permission by the agencies to do so. That's the only thing that's hanging with me.
But at least you're attempting.
Yep.
On behalf of the parents. Okay, so back to indoor track, but it's an outside event. It's gonna be outside this year. Do you need a motion for us?
Yeah, we need us to approve indoor track for this year, and then I would need the motion to approve the coaches for that.
Okay. So can I have a motion to approve indoor track 2021 that will take place outside? Pete first, Shawna second, Alan in favor? So I need a motion to approve the appointment of Mr. Sayer's head coach, indoor track, step five, effective 2020, 21 school year. Pete first, Shawna second, Alan in favor? I need a motion to approve Todd Homan, assistant coach, indoor track, step five, effective 2020, 2021 school year. Shawna first, Pete second, Alan in favor? All right. Can we go to football?
Yep, so, uh, football is considered a high-risk sport. It is outdoors. Um, we approved the high-risk sports, um, plan for, uh, basketball, which was indoor. Uh, this is the, essentially the exact same plan that is submitted for basketball with the exception, as we've been discussing here, of two parents and the two spectators that they have permitted, uh, through Herkimer County Public Health for outdoor sports. So this would be essentially the same situation as soccer or the fall season that we had. Uh, you know, you'd have two per, uh, two per athlete and, um, we would screen them on the way in and they'd be able to, to, to view that. So that's the only difference in this plan than basketball, which at this point is not allowing spectators for indoor. Everything else in this plan for football is the same. Uh, in order for me to move forward with football, um, we would need approval of football as a high-risk sport. Uh, once the board approves that, or if the board approves that, I then send that on to Herkimer County Public Health, like I did basketball, and send it on to the school physician where they would sign off on it and football would move forward. So, uh, if we are in favor of football moving forward, um, we would motion to pass football, uh, for the school year, and then we would approve the two coaches that are associated.
Any questions about football this year?
We can't do the in one way and out another way for football though, can we? Is there a way to do that?
Hmm, there's some different things. I'm not overly concerned with that. We've got some different areas we might be able to look at, but you're, you're pretty spaced out there. We can get the gate and we've got a couple loops around the thing. We can handle that.
So it'll be okay?
Yeah.
Gonna be streamed for those of us that can't come?
Yeah, yeah, I think, you know, we could stream some games and do some things. We're, we're getting our first shot at that tonight, so hopefully that's going well.
I watched JV girls.
That, that?
All right, um, it, the streaming earlier looked good.
It looked good, yeah.
All right, a motion to approve football for the 2021 spring. It's a fall sport. Carson first, Jessica second, Alan in favor? All right, a motion to approve football for the 2021 spring. It's a fall sport. Carson first, Jessica second, I'll in favor. Appointments. Motion to approve Todd Homan, head coach, varsity football, step five, effective 2020, 21 school year. Shawna first, Carson second, I'll in favor. Motion to approve, I can't see it, Mr. Sarris, assistant coach, varsity football, step five, effective 2020, 21 school year. Shawna first, Jessica second, I'll in favor. Thank you. Okay, water safari.
All right, last item on the discussion is water safari. Um, for those of you that are familiar, that's the Chatham Forest and Old Forge. Um, they have put in a request to basically give a free lifeguard training, uh, over the spring break. Um, if, if, here at West Canada, if they're able to use our pool, uh, they would follow all of our rules. We wouldn't have to do anything at all. It'd be during the day. Um, it would be open to our kids here at West Canada Valley. It would be open to other people itself to come in, uh, to the building itself, um, and it would last that week. Um, and we would have to grant them the use of the facility. This is obviously more of a discussion for two reasons. One, it's water safari, so that's a, uh, it's not a nonprofit organization. That's number one. Um, and number two, um, certainly under the pandemic times, this is a little bit different for the use of the pool. So, um, where typically I, I, I might look at this and say, you know, this is a good opportunity. It could offer some training for our own kids here and some appointment opportunities, uh, as that's expected to open in the summer up there. Um, I think it's, it's important to also weigh the other variables with the things that I just talked about. So, I'm looking for some discussion on that, thoughts on allowing an outside agency, um, to come in and do this. This, based on what I'm looking at, will have zero financial impact on us. Uh, they are self-sufficient in basically what they'd be doing and testing and so forth, um, handling all, who's going to come in, the tracing and all the things. We obviously work with them to make sure we're, everything's in protocol. Um, so I'm, I'm okay with all that, for, those portions of it. I think that can happen. I think the logistics of the, the break during the day would be, you know, they're going to work around any swim that we're doing there. So, the swim team's in there. They're going to work around those times for us and so forth. So, they're willing to do whatever they want. They would like, they've put in a request. Obviously, when things come to light with these places, we're one of the few schools, um, that has a pool. Um, so, we're always going to be on that list. State police wanted to use our pool, um, when they needed training, when class guy was closed. So, I'm kind of hoping for discussion on this and thoughts on direction on whether we are kind of reluctant to do this now and allow that to happen or whether we'd like to see it go in place and we've been a while on here.
Any locker rooms?
So, there wouldn't be any locker. We, we basically would create changing areas, which is what, what we're going to do at Swim, so it would be kind of just a little changing area inside the door that we would have individuals. It's the same kind of concept for doing swim. So, there's not access to lockers and locker rooms and those kinds of things, what we're creating. We would, we would have to, they would have to come prepared, but we, for the most part, we'd have to create some changing areas for sure.
How many people?
Good question. I don't know the numbers that would be involved in that at this time, so it's kind of a preliminary.
So, are they bringing people in from, oh, local area?
Yeah, so it'd be this local area is what you have. It's, you know, people that have interest and kids that would have interest mostly that I think working in water safari in the summer. So, I would expect us to have some, you know, Poland, West Canada. I, I don't know if they have a lot at all. I have no idea how many kids would be interested in any of this. But yeah, it would be open to anybody and they would, they would post it. It would be, the training would be for this week at West Canada Valley High School, and those kids would sign up through water safari to do the training.
They're looking at the five days?
Yeah, just that week they're asking for, five days.
So, they want every day?
Yeah, they want some time every day that week, yep.
I think I did see something that Little Falls YMCA is doing something the same week.
Are they?
They're doing a lifeguard training, too.
They're doing a regular lifeguard training? Yeah, this is, I think this is, I think what you have going on here is you have a lack of supply here, you know, trying to offer opportunities and increase some supply.
Not, not for profit. Does that mean you open up the building for anybody who wants to use it? No.
Very good question.
It's a precedent, right?
Yeah, it's a very good question, uh, and that's why I brought that up in the beginning, that typically, you know, uh, government agencies like the state police, uh, fire departments, our volunteer fire departments, things that you typically in the past opened up your facility for, but those kinds of places. Um, this is a little different. This is, this is, uh.
If I want the building.
What's that?
And so, next time, if I want the building, how you going to tell me no?
Yep. Good question.
Do we have a rate fee term?
Yeah, I want a birthday party here.
So, what I'll answer to Mr. Mark was you have, you have some right as a group, um, you have some right as a group to say, what benefit does this opportunity bring? So, if I was going to hang my hat on allowing it, I would say, uh, this is providing a benefit to the community and to the, potentially to the kids that go here. Where, uh, if Mr. Mark would want to argue his group buying would be a benefit, you know, we'd have to evaluate that as well. Uh, so, yeah, but, you know, there's places that do. We've generally, at, at least in, in my time, have not done that, um, for, for, for profit group to use the building, but lots of schools do.
Sure, sure. Yeah, sure, sure.
Yep, yep.
They rented. So, we could, um, start.
Do we have a rental fee in this place if they want it to?
That doesn't cover the.
No.
Custodians.
But they're already here, right?
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so one of the things that, that I kind of stressed initially was that I, you know, I, we, I don't have people in logistics to help you at all, so you can't be looking for that. And we, we don't have any financials. We're not going to take in any, uh, incurring costs to add extra staff here, or you'd have to pay for that if you want, you know, those kind of things. So, we wouldn't necessarily be incurring any staff because the piecework is.
It's $45 an hour.
Forty-five dollars. I want to rent the building.
I know.
Forty-five dollars, I want to rent it.
Costs you 100 at the line for your pool party. You get the gym for half hour.
We're creating a program last year where the kids could get certified.
So, yeah, we, we've run some Red Cross, like, guarding training and things like that, but again, those are different, you know, those are.
No, right, but were those kids able to get certified?
Yeah, they could, so our kids could.
Last year, did it run fully where those kids were certified?
Yeah, so leading up, leading up to COVID, Red Cross was in here. We were rolling that right along until COVID hit. So, yeah, so we've had those opportunities.
Finish or something?
What's that?
The kids that were part of that didn't finish if they hadn't finished.
Uh, I don't know the, necessarily the answer to that.
Not just to take advantage of the opportunity.
Yeah, yep.
So, I'm in favor because if it's going to benefit our kids during spring break to have another certification, potentially have employment, um, I'm in favor of that. Um, I could go either way, $45 an hour building, you know, rate, or they could give everybody a free ticket.
Well, they, don't we have a partnership with them?
I was going to say, they have a reading program. I don't think they made it this year. They had a reading program over the last few years. I think it was under Mrs. May. And everybody that participated in the reading program, they got a ticket.
Yeah, so they, so they do, I will say, that's probably gone on for four or five years at least. So, they, they, they provided each of our kids who have participated in the reading thing a free pass every year to the program in K26.
Since there's no financial impact, it's during the spring break, during the day while we have people here and, you know, if it's offered to our kids, I, I don't have a problem with that, but anybody else have on the other side?
Yeah, I would, I'd like to have a motion to approve water safari use during the spring break.
All right, I need a motion to approve the use of our pool during spring break by the water safari-trained lifeguards for the upcoming season. Shawna first. Pete second, I'll in favor. Announcements, April 1st is, um, the BOSI's annual meeting, um, at 6:00 PM that Mrs. Sherwin talked about this morning. I will be attending that as our, um, one person. But anybody else who's more than welcome to.
I'll be in, I'll be in.
Um, April 12th is our next board meeting. April 19th, board petitions are due by 5:00 PM. We'll have a special meeting, April 21st, um, the BOSI's, um, budget.
Are we setting a time for that?
So, we, we can discuss that at the April meeting. You have time, too, but that's typically the meeting that you have first thing in the morning. Um, okay, prove that.
Um, public hearing on our budget is May 10th at 6:00 PM with our regular board meeting following at 6:30, and then the budget vote will be May 18th, um, 12 to 8. All right, any public comments?
I just had one thing. I wanted to thank Mrs. Holmes and I think it's Mrs. Crossup for the pitchers, for the elementary. Got a lot of compliments on that for the pitchers being outside. Thank you.
I think you're starting to try now. I saw a lot of comments like they would like to do them outside going forward.
That was nice.
Any public comments? Okay, anything else? Thank you. All right, a motion to adjourn. First, Shawna second, I'll in favor. All right, thank you. No.